Okay, I've got nine o'clock folks and I don't see any members of the public here today, but the fourth estate is welcome, welcome. So I'll just call the meeting to order, this work session. And before we get started, I just wanted to say, just by scanning this budget, we've never had a budget done like this before and it's excellent. Summer, Evelyn, everybody that worked on that thing and now we have power with us. It's a super good budget. We appreciate all the...I think y'all spent thirty, forty-five minutes on this.
One point five.
Yes, that's what I said. Oh, really? So what I'm gonna do, I'm gonna turn it over to our town manager, if you'll just take over and move on.
Thank you, appreciate that, Mr. Mayor. And I wouldn't like to really recognize Ms. Evelyn Sutherland, she has been such an asset to the town the past few months and she has taught me a lot with the budgeting process and I'm very thankful that we have her with us. To kinda give you guys an overview of what I would...the direction I'd like us to go today, I'm gonna take just a little bit of time and kind of hit the budget message this year, just because it...to go into a little bit more detail about the reevaluation and your revenue neutral. After that, I'd like to just kind of, as we have in previous years, just kinda go through page by page of the budget. And then at the end, I wanted to talk about, I've got some handouts that I've distributed about what taxes could possibly look like and how that affects the average tax bill. Also, your water and sewer rates and the Sutherland has a couple different hands out. One, she has trended your fund balance since 2009. So we have a spreadsheet that will show you kind of where you were in 2009 to where you are this upcoming fiscal year. And then also, she has to go over with you guys all the debt that the town has on all of our properties, buildings, and kinda show you our debt schedule and when some of that debt should be rolling off. So if you'll just bear with me, we'll start with the overview of the budget and we'll start with the message. The town of Franklin remains in sound financial condition. This budget addresses the need for long-term financial infrastructure and strategic planning for the town of Franklin. The town continues to experience slow growth in revenue sources, especially water and sewer revenue. All departments and general government were able to reduce their budgets by five percent. It is crucial that expenditures do not exceed revenues. The town should continue to stabilize and build its fund balance. Fund balance is key to long-term financial planning. The town should carefully prepare for unanticipated loss of revenues, especially with the ever-living threat of the North Carolina General Assembly and their involvement in local government affairs. The pending threat of the sales tax redistribution bill and the elimination of the privilege license fee are a couple issues facing local governments. The next statement is to kinda give you guys insight into exactly what it is for a revenue-neutral tax rate. North Carolina GS 159-11E requires each taxing unit to publish a revenue-neutral property tax rate as part of its budget for the fiscal year following the reevaluation of its trade property. The purpose of the revenue-neutral tax rate is to provide citizens with comparative information. As defined in NCGS 159-11E, in each year in which a general reappraisal of rural property has been conducted, the budget officer shall include in the budget for comparison purposes a statement of the revenue-neutral property tax rate for the budget. The revenue-neutral property tax rate is the rate that is estimated to produce revenue for the next fiscal year equal to the revenue that we...that would have been produced for the next fiscal year by the current tax rate if no reappraisal had occurred. To calculate the revenue-neutral tax rate, the budget officer shall first determine a rate that would produce revenues equal to those produced for the current fiscal year and then increase the rate by growth factor equal to the average annual percentage increase in tax base due to improvements since the last general appraisal. This growth factor represents expected percentage increase in the value of tax base due to involvement during the next fiscal year. This budget offer...the budget officer shall further adjust the rate to account for any annexation, de-annexation, merger, or similar event. The next paragraph goes into a little bit more detail of where the town is with our current tax rate, what it would take us to be revenue-neutral, and then with a growth factor. The town's current total property value is $725,317,174. The town's current property tax rate is twenty-seven, which equates to .2700 cents per $100 of valuation. The reappraisal produced a tax base of $718,35,498. This is a decline of $7,281,676 in assessed value from the current fiscal year. This equates to a total of 1.014% of reduction. Using the new tax base of $718,35,498 in fiscal year 2015-2016, a tax rate of .2727 cents per $100 of valuation is needed to produce a revenue-neutral budget for fiscal year 2015-2016. And in addition to that, we had to calculate a growth factor. As part of calculating a revenue-neutral tax rate, GS 159-11E provides that a growth factor be used in calculating the revenue-neutral rate base upon the average increase in the tax base due to improvements since the last general reappraisal. The last appraisal was in 2007. The town of Franklin's base has grown 2.07% on average. And applying a growth factor of 2.07% to the tax rate of .2727 cents per $100 of valuation, a revenue-neutral tax rate would be .2784 cents per $100 of valuation, and that includes your growth factor. The next item I wanted to address was, in the budget message, we referred that the...in the current budget that you have, there is a request from the Franklin Fire Department to Macon County to increase the current fire tax rate of 0.030 cents per $100 of valuation to 0.039 per $100 of valuation. At this time, reappraisal values were not available. Since then, I do have, and that is the memo that I passed out before you, as we know, the Macon County Commissioners will end up making the decision on if they decide to increase that to what this memo reflects, and I'll go over that. The Franklin Fire District's current total property value is $1,636,609,808. The Franklin Fire District's current fire tax rate is 0.0300 cents per $100 of valuation. The reappraisal produced a tax base of $1,390,637,738. This is a decline of $245,972,70 and assessed value from the current fiscal year. Using the new tax base of $1,390,637,738 in fiscal year 2015-2016, a tax rate of 0.0353 cents per $100 of valuation is needed to produce a revenue-neutral budget for fiscal year 2015-2016. Again, as part of calculating a revenue-neutral tax rate, a growth factor should be used and due to the improvements since the last general appraisal, since 2007, the Franklin Fire District has grown .76% on average. And applying a growth factor of .76% to the tax rate of 0.0353 cents per $100 of valuation, a revenue-neutral tax rate with a growth factor would equate to 0.0356 per $100 of valuation. The Franklin Fire District will be requesting an additional .009 tax increase over revenue-neutral. That would...what that would equate to is taking the 0.0356 of revenue-neutral and adding an additional 0.0090, which is nine tenths of a cent, which would give you a total tax-proposed rate of 0.0446. What I would suggest to the board with the Fire Department, since the county, we're a little bit further ahead in our budget process than the county at this time, once the county approves their budget and if they do decide that they want to move forward with that tax increase, and I spoke with Evelyn about that, what the town could do come July, we could do a budget amendment that would adjust that, correct?
That's right. Just to add that additional revenue that's not reflected in our budget.
The next part I wanted to go over with you is the personnel. This budget calls for a 2% cost of living to be added to base pay plus a 1% one-time in December if financial conditions permit. And as we go through the budget today, when you notice your total salaries by each department, that 2% is already calculated into those total salaries. It's not the total salaries that you see in the budget plus an additional 2%. The 2% is already co-mingled in the salaries that you see. It also addresses if there is the possibility of a 1% one-time Christmas bonus in December if financial conditions permit. Funds are also budgeted for salary adjustments for pay plan implementation, and as we go through the budget, I'll address those with you. This budget eliminates the part-time Main Street Coordinator position. Instead of festivals and event budget is proposed with funding allotted for contractually-obligated firm or individual for town festival and event responsibilities. This is a cost savings to the town of $25,200. Employee benefits will remain unchanged and the town's health insurance annual premium has dropped by $12,000, maybe some more. We're still in the process of that, so that's very positive.
That's super.
Debt service. All debt payments are budgeted as required by law. The town sewer plant project of $5,190,484 is completed and $373,741 is budgeted for new debt service. The town secured a $3.5 million loan through the North Carolina State Revolving Loan Fund for upgrades and expansions to the water plant. However, the first payment towards debt service of the upgrades and expansion of the water plant, they will not be due until fiscal year 2017-2018. This budget also accounts for existing debt service of $155,575 for general fund and $270,561 for water and sewer. Also, debt service on the water plant, the existing water plant, of $12,600 will be paid off this current fiscal year that we're in. So that debt will roll off.
That's already rolled off.
Has it rolled?
We just made that payment.
Good. Capital projects. The town will begin the first phase of the water plant upgrade and expansion with engineering report approval beginning October the first, 2015, and bid in design packets submittal as of April the first, 2016. Operating capital outlay. The Police Department will be replacing two patrol vehicles with over 100,000 miles. The Water and Sewer Department will be replacing two 1988 vehicles with over 100,000 miles. And the Street Department will be replacing one, it is not a 1998, I made a mistake on that, it's a 1995, with over 100,000 miles. A lease payment option would be best for all departments replacing vehicles, and I do have that as we go through each department that's requesting new vehicles, I do have lease options for us. Operations. Nonprofit funds for community organizations are left at the current budget total of $40,000. Special projects. Funds are budgeted for the town to begin looking at bricklayers on both sides of the downtown sidewalk areas. Funds are also budgeted for downtown crosswalk improvements. This budget also designates $3,700 for the North Carolina Bicycle and Pedestrian Planning Grant the town received. The total amount of the grant, because NCDOT was gonna give us $37,000 plus the 3,700 match that we had to do, gave you a total for this grant of $40,700. And again, however, we were just responsible for 3,700. And then all departments were able to reduce their budget by 5% with the exception of those listed below. The Fire Department, they have the request to increase the fire tax rate stems from the increased volume of calls the town has received. One entry-level staff position for the Fire Department is recommended to help with the increased call volume. A modest transfer from the fire fund balance of $208,605 is recommended for capital purchases, and I'll go into that a little bit further when we get to their line item. Water and Sewer Department. Funds are budgeted for Forest Avenue Water and Sewer Line Repair. Water and Sewer Line Repair is needed before the street can be paved. The basin at the water plant only needs to be cleaned every five years. However, this budget alots funding of $30,000 this fiscal year. The reason for this is to start a reserve account for this project in preparation of cleaning the drainage basin in fiscal year 2018-2019. The total estimated cost to clean the drainage basin is $150,000. Also, this budget designates funds for a new full-time engineering position. This position will be a cost savings and benefit to the town tremendously as the town moves forward with the water plant upgrade and expansion along with various other projects and the town's comprehensive improvements plan. Water and Sewer Rates. Based on current estimates, water and sewer revenue combined are estimated at $3,263,000. A modest transfer from water and sewer fund balance of $275,718 is recommended. Martin McGill completed a detailed water and sewer study in January 2015. In order to maintain the existing infrastructure and to upgrade and expand the water plant and to start funding the town's comprehensive improvements plan, a modest water and sewer rate increase is recommended. A 5% rate increase is recommended for water and sewer. The proposed rate increases only affect base and volume charges but not tap, connection, or other miscellaneous charges. The conclusion of this budget. This budget for local fiscal year 2015-2016, its balance is required by law and continues to provide existing services while meeting the governing board's priorities and policies. A revenue-neutral tax rate adjusted for growth is recommended for fund of $450,000 for POW bill. However, this budget does not include an appropriation of general fund balance. Instead, a contribution to fund balance is recommended. This budget addresses long-term financial infrastructure and strategic planning for the town, which all three are crucial to the growth of the town of Franklin. What I would like to do next is just kinda go page by page, by department, department, and as you have questions, feel free to ask. The first page that you see, if you wanna...we've addressed it in the budget message, but there is the figure one that goes into detail about your revenue-neutral tax rate for your review. That basically just backs up what we just went over. Okay. On Exhibit A, I will get in more detail on Schedule One, Page One, Page Two, but what I wanted to look at on Exhibit A was total anticipated revenue in general fund, Fire Department, and your enterprise, which is your water and sewer fund. So your total anticipated revenue without any appropriations in general fund would be $3,432,700. The Fire Department without any appropriation would be $583,991. Your enterprise, which is your water and sewer fund with no appropriation, would be So that would give you a total anticipated revenue budget of $7,447,741. Now, if you go down to the next one where it says fund balance appropriated in general fund, that $450,000 is your POW bill funds. If you added the $450,000 to your total anticipated revenue for general fund, in grand total, you would have $3,882,700. Fire Department with their fund balance appropriated of $208,605, your Fire Department total would be $792,596. And remember, that could be subject to change depending on if the county does give us the increase. Your water and sewer with your retained earnings, which in mine and I think Evelyn's opinion is your fund balance there, it's just retained earnings for your enterprise fund, the transfer of $275,718 would give you a total of $3,706,768. So with general fund, Fire Department, enterprise with the fund balance appropriations, you have a total budget revenue of $8,382,64. And then the appropriations end, or your expenditures end, if you drop on down, same thing, total appropriations in your general fund would be $3,882,700. Your Fire Department fund expended would be $792,596. Your enterprise fund would be $3,706,768. And then a total, which makes you a balance, you would have total of $8,382,64. Any questions on that page? Okay? Schedule...the next page, Schedule One, Page One and Two, goes into a little bit more detail of what we covered. Your current year ad valorem taxes. Evelyn and I have looked at this extensively and tried to give you a projection of what we expect to receive as far as revenues. Last year, your current year taxes, you were at $1,727,500. We are predicting that the town would receive $1,831,000. And what that is, that is based on a 96% collection rate. That's not at 100% because you need to leave some room for that. Your first year prior, the reason there's an increase is the $45,000 is a truer pitcher than the $15,000 that was budgeted. We were actually collecting a little bit more than that. $45,000 is your safest number. Your second year, your third year, your fourth year, prior years, your collection rate is the same as in your current year that we're in. Motor vehicle has went up. Last year, we budgeted $60,000. You're actually gonna collect a little bit more, so we're projecting $100,000 for this year. Penalties and interest remain the same. So total in ad valorem taxes for this budget is $1,986,500. Now, other taxes, your local option sales tax, and keep in mind with the states, this is the one to watch the next couple months. We had budgeted $540,000 last year. That were actually...our collection rate is much higher. And in your budget notebooks, we did try to show you where we've got those revenue numbers so you can compare. We're projecting that if the state did not touch the sales tax redistribution bill, we would collect $640,000. Now, your privilege license, that is your fee. Last year, we were able to collect the $35,000. As you know, this year, that's going away, but the board voted a few months ago to put in that registration fee. So we will generate a small amount of revenue off of that fee, which we're predicting to be about $4,500 this year. So your other taxes would be $644,500. Your unrestricted intergovernmental revenues, this is your franchise taxes. Last year was $417,000. A truer pitcher and closer to what you are actually collecting is more in the ballpark of $430,000. And that's what we're predicting there. Now, your restricted intergovernmental revenue, your POW bill is the same, it's went up a little bit than last year. We've received some. Last year was $120,000. We're predicting $125,000 this year. Now, one item that's new is your NCDOT Bike and Pedestrian Planning Grant. We will be receiving the $37,000 from NCDOT, and of course, as you know, that's restricted to that Bike and Pedestrian Planning Grant. So your total there would be $162,000.
Summer, before we leave the POW bill real quick, why, do we not anticipate that with the sales tax reduction, that some of the POW bill funds that we get may go down?
It could possibly.
So we can't count on that $125,000 100%?
Not 100%, no sir.
That's based on gas tax.
Yeah, I saw this morning where they expected it to be down. The legislative report was on that they expected the cause of the reduction in gas tax, that they expected the POW bill money to flatten.
That's what we're concerned about. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. Any other questions on this page? Okay? Moving on to our second page, Schedule One. Your cable television franchise, that has actually increased. We're projecting this year would be $2,200 when last year was $2,000. Sony permits are averaging, they'll probably be the same, around $4,000. Something you didn't have last year, that your finance officer didn't budget for some reason, is you do collect signed permits. Last year, zero was budgeted, but you were projecting you'll collect $2,000 this year. So that gives you your license and permits totaled this year of collecting $8,200. Other sources, investment earnings, the same, 500 we're projecting. Your rents have increased. A couple reasons, you've had some increased rental in the JC Park. You also have your rental at the Life Springs Church that we get once a month. So we are projecting your rentals to continue to grow based on just the new buildings we've acquired this past year.
Have you found the DNF part of that?
No, sir, but I've got that to look at. ABC store profits, we're projecting the same as last year, $70,000. The sale of property and miscellaneous, probably around $25,000. The reason that was a little bit high was, and Evelyn, correct me if I'm wrong, this was the sale of the total police cruiser?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And we'll touch on that because that's gonna resurface in the Police Department budget because that allowed us to decrease our lease payment this year. Administrative reimbursement, we're able to reduce that, $105,000 to $84,500. Two things that you didn't have budgeted last year that you collect is your local occupancy tax administration fee. You actually get $2,500 from that. Court costs wasn't budgeted last year, you're actually collecting around $1,000 off of that. So that gives you $201,500. And then your total anticipated revenue and your fund balance appropriation to general fund would be zero. This current year, and remember, we'll touch on this in just a little bit. Current...last year, you guys had budgeted $106,000 for your general fund balance appropriation. This year, this budget anticipates no appropriation is needed.
Question?
Yes, sir.
Where does the...when does the lead start on the Old Town Hall?
June.
This year? Or is it in?
It will go, and that's part of your rent too.
Okay.
Then your fund balance appropriated for POW bill, and again, you know, state like you never know, we're just projecting $450,000. So total budget, $3,882,700. Any questions on this page?
Summer. That $450,000 in POW bill appropriation, you already have that in hand. That's restricted, doesn't have anything to do with what you may collect next year. So you're good with these probably?
We already have that.
Yes.
Perfect.
Thank you, ma'am.
And what have they been more effective in budgeting?
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions? Thank you, Summer. Okay. Okay, the next few items, we're gonna go, this is by department, and this is all in general fund. There's a couple things that I'll note this year, the next little bit, there's no longer any miscellaneous line items. We're calling it is what it is. And there's also no other services line items. If it's a service, we're telling you if it's a contracted service or if it's a lease, that's one way. You'll also see line items in here for dental insurance, longevity, and another big one, you'll see a line item in here for fuel. Fuel is not vehicle maintenance, and that is how the past budgets have accounted for it, was putting in a vehicle maintenance. So that has been split out. There's also some new line items, and as we go through page by page, if you have questions, we'd be glad to address them. So the first one we have is you guys, the governing body. Pretty much the same as last year.
Every section.
Police dog in advance. About one Cherokee member gets $50,000 more than the toll board.
Well, that's just a notation.
Just a notation.
Well, I like that, they just vote themselves.
Yeah.
There's a motion in order to...
Reassure.
Let's mess up this budget.
Y'all just stay out of this for a little while.
Let's mess up this budget.
First thing.
Your...one notation, and we did approve this earlier for this upcoming year, is your... Your, one, one notation, and we did approve this earlier for this upcoming year, is your the professional services accounting. That is the town audit, and it did increase slightly this year. And if you'll recall it, a couple of board meetings ago, we did approve that audit contract based on the slight increase. Your other professional services, we decreased that a little bit. That is just if the town needed to, for instance, if you needed Martin McGill, or if you wanted to hire someone a couple of years ago to do some property evaluations, you have kind of a little bit of funding and resources to do that within your budget. One thing we also did was travel and training is combined. In previous budgets, there was separate line items for travel and training. I'm not certain why, so we've just co-mingled them back together. Your travel and training went up, $500. Advertising decreased that a little bit. You were at $3,000, and I think this year, you barely spent $500 or $600. So, to try and do some cost savings, $1,500 there.
What kind of advertise, excuse me, what kind of advertising would that be?
For example, information please, anything that has like town information or emergency contact. Also, let's say that you needed to do a vacancy for something, you can take some of that from your existing budget, but you don't use, $3,000 was way too much, what you guys are Dues and subscriptions, that is your lead membership, your, the Chapel Hill School of Government membership, Region A membership. And memberships are expected to stay the same as they are this current year. Your economic development, that is for Whitley's, what is it? Franklin Tubular, I'm so sorry. Franklin Tubular, that is that incentive package. Your nonprofit funding stayed the same. Picking on the squares stayed the same. And your Franklin area Chamber of Commerce stayed the same. With making a few adjustments, we're able to decrease governing body by $1,800 less than fiscal year 1415.
That Chamber of Commerce, is that the dues?
No, that is the town's contribution to the fireworks.
How many years was that economic development plan for?
You've got two more years left on it. Any other questions?
That does include.
Other questions? Couple of things to note here, you'll see the dental insurance. In previous years, dental insurance was grouped all together with group insurance. We have split that out. So, you will see a truer pitcher of what expenditures are actually expended within each budget line item. Other professional services, we decreased that as well. That is kind of similar to what is in your budget, where if administration needed to go out, kind of like the MAPS group, and have some other consulting, we have that. I don't foresee us needing that. That's why we were able to decrease it. Supplies decreased from $7,000 to $6,000. Now, your travel and training is up from last year, and part of that is because it was under budgeted the previous year. Also, you have Chad who's going to the clerk's school. We've got some clerk dues associated with that now since he's your town clerk and HR training.
Will you play those?
Vehicle maintenance, we cut that out. We had $1,000 last year. We, we don't, that's an item we don't need. Other services, again, that's, don't need that. Some of these line items, we never, they were just bluff, in our opinion. Dues and subscriptions, we were able to reduce to $600. Miscellaneous went away, and we did add one new line item, which you did not have last year, and that's employee screenings. And what that is, is new hires, background checks, random drug testing. It allows us to have that since we have, administration has HR.
We're able to test for FCDLs, random drug testing, psych insensitive conditions, which you guys are aware of, drug, alcohol policies, etc. We haven't been doing that, so it's like.
And so, we were able to decrease this budget by $3,128 from fiscal year 1415. Any questions? Okay. Finance. One thing to note in finance is this one does have an increase. However, this is partly due because you now have this, you'll have three people in finance. You have our accounts payable, our financial consultant, and our finance officer this year versus what you had last year, with just one individual. Same thing, their dental is reflected there. Other professional services, we're able to reduce to 500. Supplies are able to reduce to 3,000. Travel and training, we're able to reduce from $8,000 to $6,500. And part of that is due because the finance officer, our new finance officer, Ms. Kyra, has a couple more courses at Chapel Hill to finish up her certified finance officer certificate. Dues and subscriptions, we're able to decrease that down from $1,500 to $600. Miscellaneous went away. We did add a new line item for computer equipment. A new computer and printer is needed in finance. The existing, yeah, Ms. Evelyn's.
Cops a lot.
Any questions in finance? Billing and collections. Dental is broken down as well. Your supplies, we were able to decrease from $5,000 down to $1,500. Now, your travel and training has increased, and I will tell you why. Your tax collector has a couple more conferences she's going to. She's also working on some financial training, which I think is a benefit to the town to kind of get everyone to functions of different agencies we have within town hall. I think the better off, in the long run, the town is, the more diversity and understanding we each can develop for everyone's job here at town hall. Also, that includes some training for your customer service rep, if she wanted to go and get some additional training. Dues and subscriptions, we're able to decrease from $500 down to $100, and miscellaneous went away. So, we were able to decrease billing and collections by $493 from current fiscal year. Any questions?
Legal.
I'm sorry. Why is the group insurance so much higher on it? I'm like looking back at like general government, when you have salaries of $130 and group insurance of $14,000, and then when we look at this one, it's $66,000. Almost half of the amount in salaries and wages, but it's the same group insurance.
On which one? Billing and collections. Because I have group insurance at $14,475.
Right, which is the same as it is in general government.
On which page, Patty?
Oh, wait, never mind, never mind. Norman.
Okay, I was getting, I was getting, yeah.
It's still two people.
Yeah, okay. Okay.
Questions are appreciated.
No, that was. Thanks, Patty.
We'll hear a motion to ignore Patty.
Join back there.
Legal and elections. Professional legal services stayed the same. Now, you will have an elections expense this year, since it is an election, which is $5,000, where we didn't have that last year. And now, the reason legal advertising has increased, what we did is individual administration, your planning department, some in finance, were having their own individual advertising line items within their budget. I think it would be cleaner to take that all and put it in legal, because that is legal advertising that we do, instead of trying to pick it out of each budget we're to take it from. So, that's that increase, was because we reduced it from the other departments that it was being taken out of, and just put it all in one place. So, you did have a slight increase, but that is because, like I said, just co-mingling everything together for your legal advertising.
Let me ask you a question.
Yes, sir.
Is he increasing back to, back to June? Is that reflected in?
Nope. Because he has not asked anything further with that. I've not saw anything else.
He must do.
I don't know. I'm worried. But no, that is, he has not said anything to, brought to my attention, I've yet to see any requests.
Now, you guys can say something, so.
And he has copies of all this.
And you would have to do it for all of them.
Other questions? Facilities. Okay, the reason you have an increase in facilities is in your salary and wages, is because last year, you only had one employee of facilities, and that was your custodian. This year, we took Mr. Keener, who is in our maintenance department. He was being paid out of the public works budget. Now that he's doing maintenance for all the facilities, we basically removed him from water and sewer fund and put him in facilities. So, he is under general government. So, that is for the increase. Now, this will be the first one, you'll notice, the longevity. Employees with 10 years or longer are entitled to longevity. Therefore, instead of previous year's longevity and everything was co-mingled in the salary and wages. I don't feel like that is a true pitcher. Therefore, it is cleaner to break it down and show the board and show the public what is actually being paid out of that. So, there is a new line item within the departments that have employees receiving longevity. That way, it's reflected that you guys can view. Same thing with dental, it's reflected here. The uniforms increased again because last year, you had one person, this year, you got two people. The other thing to note, postage, the reason there's a decrease here, for some reason, postage, all postage was being paid out of facilities, and that should not be, because the bulk of your postage is your water billing. Water billing is an enterprise fund. Therefore, the postage should be with your water billing, and that's reflected in their budget, but that's for that decrease. The $5,000 that you see is for general operating for town. You do have some business license registrations that go out, general mail that may go out, letters, also your tax bills. But that's the decrease there. Building maintenance, we're able to decrease that down to 4,000. Fuel is something you'll notice. Vehicle maintenance, last year was 1,000. Again, though, we do have two vehicles now, since we have two employees. So, we allotted for fuel in this line item. Other services went away. And what other services is, some of it was a contract service and some of it was a cushion that I don't know why was there. So, we eliminated anything that we did not know what it was for. Your insurance and bonds stayed the same. Contracted service in facilities, this is your J and B disposal. This is your Aaron's Pest Control and Termite. And then again, miscellaneous went away. Any questions on facilities? We were able to decrease IT by $3,000 from current fiscal year. One note, your supplies, or if you'll notice, your salaries and wages down to unemployment insurance, all of that is now zero, since our town planner has assumed complete responsibility of the IT services that the town has. So, all of that is now zero. Your supplies, we're able to decrease those from $14,000 down to $6,000. Travel and training is gone. Now, other services, if you notice, you have $43,200 last year. We did away with that line item and called them what they were. That is mainly contracted service. And what that is, that's your Blossom West for internet fiber, that's your phone lines we have here, that's cell phones, internet fees. That, that's what that is. It's not other services, it's something that the town is actually on contract with. Capital outlay equipment, that is a couple of new printers and computers for that, for different departments. And then your utilities, again, that was all co-mingled in that $43,200, and we just called it what it is. Any questions on this one? Well, that's in facilities. I'm sorry, I misunderstood you. On some of that, Evelyn, the utilities, was this, which one was this? Was this the Blossom West?
I think so.
Okay.
Primary one.
Let me look a little quick. Oh, yeah. Oh, here we go. Blossom West, $4,500. Alarm system, $500. And Verizon Wireless Cell Phone, $17,000.
I think that's pretty close. And what's the contracted service?
Contracted service. This amount is for contracts with Simon Hyatt with the county. That is if there's a problem that our IT director isn't able to solve. We actually have the possibility of contracting with an individual to come in here and assist him.
We did that, Mr. Hyatt, you I T. Once a current county, we have to afford, we would pay a lot more, a lot more than that.
Did that help a little bit? Had to think a minute. I know, but I got it.
And I would like to say, because a lot of this is jumbled to me, to a lot of people, in breaking it all down, I think not for us, but especially for the taxpayer, I really think it's something that will be easier to explain to people, instead of saying, well, that's what they said it was.
Yeah.
It's a lot more true accounting.
A much more true accounting.
Thank you.
Amen.
I don't need too much credit, I don't want to take a blame. More without the other.
Yeah, you got it right.
Any other questions on IT? Okay.
So, Evelyn, they split up the responsibilities and you got the blame.
There you go. That's the way it works. Planning and economic development. A couple of things to note here. Travel, dental is accounted for here. Travel and training decreased because Justin Setzer had to attend his CZO training, and we're proud to say that he did get his certificate, and we're very proud and pleased with Justin.
It's to get what's it, was it?
Certified zoning administrator.
CZO, was it?
Officer.
I didn't know if you said CZO or whatever.
So, that's the decrease there, is he doesn't, he's got that certificate now. Vehicle maintenance, we're able to decrease, and then we added the fuel line item. And then, one thing to note, what we did, since, because it's a revenue and it will eventually be an expenditure, is that NC Bike and Pedestrian Planning Grant. That's why that's stuck in there. True pitcher, we're, the town is only responsible for $3,700, but when we received the check from DOT, we need to be able to show the expenditures, the revenue side and the expenditure side. And the increase in that is strictly based because of that grant. Any questions on planning and development? Festivals and events. This, what this budget is, is supplies. A couple of things to note, from salaries down to other professional services, those are now at zero from previous year. Supplies is slightly increased, and the reason why is there's a couple of things, since the town is going to start doing the festivals for July 4th, Pumpkin Fest, Veterans Day Parade, and Winter Wonderland. For an example, supplies would be some of the pumpkins and stuff decorating town, some snowflakes, that's some example, flowers as far as Fourth of July, some of the flowers that you see up front here, just supplies for festivals and events that coordinate with a certain time. That's the increase there. Now, another thing to note, we were able to decrease advertising, and what that is, that's advertising saying, you know, Pumpkin Fest is this weekend, come join us for July 4th this weekend, Veterans Day, that's what that would be used for. Your other services is actually switched now to what it is, which is contracted services. Contracted services, there's funding built in there where the town can hire an individual, a firm, whomever we decide, to help the town assist with the festivals that the towns agree to continue to do. The other part of that, the town does have Main Street Storage, where we pay a storage fee each year of $3,000. So, that is put in contract service. Your other services is actually switched now to what it is, which is contracted services. Contracted services, there's funding built in there where the town can hire an individual, a firm, whomever we decide, to help the town assist with the festivals that the towns agreed to continue to do. The other part of that, the town does have Main Street Storage where we pay a storage fee each year of $3,000. So that is put in contract service and that's part of the stuff left over from the Main Street program. And then stuff, we, to be honest, at some point, I need to go up there and see if we can't condense some of that. And truthfully, a large one-hole storage unit is the town Christmas tree. It takes up that much. So that's what, that's another item that's built into contracted service. And then festival funding, I'll be honest, left at the same as what we are. There is some funding that the town got back from the Main Street program. However, I'll be honest, since this is the first year the town is going to try doing the festivals, the standing festivals that we've agreed to do, my hope is by next year, those festivals that we can do could be self-supporting. However, I don't want to count my eggs before they hatch, so therefore I put, hopefully we will need that, but I don't want to go in and the town say we're going to take on these festivals and we don't have any backing to do that. Other questions?
Why don't we, this is something, like for you, we've got property up there, the services, building, I don't know, we've been putting all our stuff in there, depending on what we're paying. We're going to have a nice building.
I agree. I agree.
We've got that property up there, right? And we've been, very big maintenance, we're the only ones that want to grab it, we don't need it.
What opposed at all?
We have all our own stuff for festivals, we have our property. Well, I do something.
Yeah, I think that'd be a really good idea.
And that way, we have a better control over it.
Good idea. Anything else on this one? Okay, next one. Traffic and events. This is one person, that's Mr. Roper, he's in here. We were able to decrease his supplies by 700 and that is, you know, if he fixes a stop sign or, you know, he really helps the town out a lot. Vehicle maintenance, we were able, what we did was, he had $2,000 last year. It's truthfully the same because we took vehicle maintenance and added a fuel line item. So $1,000 for vehicle maintenance and $1,000 for fuel, which leaves him at the same amount from last year. But we did decrease it by $300. Any questions there? The next one you'll notice, in previous years, for some reason it was called non-departmental. So we decided to call it what it is. That is your Leo, your law enforcement officer separation. And that is what the state mandates towns and counties to pay for those individuals who have retired with thirty-plus years from law enforcement. We currently have three individuals on this plan. It's the same as last year. But that is what that is. It's law enforcement officer separation, previously known as non-departmental.
And that goes along with charge of 62?
Yes, sir. Anything else on this one? If you'll note here as well, you can see your longevity. That is what, you have several officers who receive longevity. And you'll notice one thing, your salary and wages have decreased. And the reason that's due is because we did lose one position this year and the chief is trying to move some individuals around because he doesn't know if he necessarily needs to fill that position. It seems that we're more than capable to utilize the workforce that we have without filling that position. And we've been doing that for a couple months now and it seems to be working well. So that is why there is a decrease.
And there's a good picture of Chief Adams in the paper.
Dental insurance is accounted for in here this year. Uniforms, the chief was able to decrease. Supplies is able to decrease. This law enforcement, I'll be honest, we do not know what that is. It had $500 in there, it's never been spent, so we've eliminated it. Travel and training, we combined. It was a decrease from $9,000 to $6,000 this year. The telephones, he was able to decrease that to $1,500. Equipment maintenance, able to decrease that to $15,000. Vehicle maintenance, and here's a prime example. Vehicle maintenance last year was $82,626. That is not a true picture of vehicle maintenance because that was co-mingled with fuel. So we have stripped that down. So true vehicle maintenance for Franklin Police Department's running you about $17,000. Fuel is running you $55,000. Dues and subscriptions, this is an increase because they have several dues and subscriptions. They interact, wise communications, and for some reason, I mean, those are dues and subscriptions that they have to buy into. For some reason, that was being paid out of supplies. So we call it what it is. That's an annual due or an annual subscription for the devices that they have. Other services went away, this $3,500. Miscellaneous went away, about $1,000. Now, your capital outlay equipment, if you'll notice, last year was $54,658. For some reason, the two vehicles that we purchased, instead of putting a line item in there for capital outlay vehicle, they were accounted for in equipment. So we have made a line item because they are requesting two vehicles and we've put that in capital outlay vehicle instead of capital outlay equipment, what was done last year. And I do have, Chief Adams has been able to secure three different quotes from different businesses that are, from different car groups that would do a lease purchase with us so we could do two vehicles for the price that we have there, the $38,200. And that follows up to the next one that we added. This lease payment, we were able to decrease that because what we decided to do was earlier this year, by doing that and totaling it out, because you cannot, we ended up getting, Ellen, was it 20, $21,000? $21,000. And as we all know, you cannot buy a new vehicle for $21,000. So what we did was we took the money that we received from the vehicle that was totaled and put it towards your lease payment. So that way, your lease payment for this year, you only needed $17,300 by doing that.
It was lease payment last year under?
Vehicle ma, or equipment?
Equipment?
Yeah, it was all co-mingled there. And then we did add two more new ones, your contract services. Again, this is their J and B dumpster bill. I had to think a minute. Pest, thank you, pest control. And it seems like there's one more. Oh, their air cards for their laptops. The next one, and Evelyn, I may let you talk on that one a little bit, this ABC enforcement funds.
That's revenue that we've received for the police department. We get that from the state and it goes into a separate bank account. It's not in our main bank account at Wells Fargo, but it needs to be budgeted. So we stuck it in here and we have a revenue on the other side to match that. And at year end, we will roll whatever's left forward into the U. Because it can only be spent for this purpose, for the police department.
Is that, is that the beer tags?
I think so.
It comes from the ABC store, something like that.
And it's not a lot.
That was the one, account found in the bank.
So the chief, we were able to decrease, and the police chief was able to decrease his budget by $8,604 for, from current year. Any other questions there? Streets and maintenance. This is another one you'll see where there's longevity. You've got an employee there who we're very thankful to have, he's been with us thirty-plus years. So there is some longevity there. Dental insurance is shown there. We're able to decrease your supplies by $1,000. Utilities, they're closer, they're $90,000. We're able to decrease that. That's more of a relevant number of what's act, that's actually costing you, it's more closer to $90,000 as opposed to $110. Equipment maintenance, that has increased a little bit from last year. And I mean, that's your, some of your backhoes, your tractors, I mean, they're getting some age on them, so of course your costs are going to start to go up. Vehicle maintenance has went down a little bit. Fuel, we switched that and that's part of the vehicle maintenance as well, is a true picture of what you're spending in fuel in this department's $5,000. Beautification is increased. And part of the reason beautification is increased is last year there was no funding, there was limited funding, I should say, budgeted for the maintenance and upkeep of Niquosi mound. So that is a reflection of Niquosi mound and us being able to have it on a maintenance schedule where it's mowed every other week and that lower bank is mowed every other week as well. Also Memorial Park, the reason that's a decrease is last year, if you'll remember, we had the grant from Duke for $20,000 and we had to match a portion of that. We will not have that this year, therefore we're able to reduce it to $6,000. And while we're talking about that, to let you know where we're at with Memorial Park is unfortunately, the wildlife release form that we had to have, that we worked with LTLT over, was delayed. The state didn't actually give it to us till the second week in May. Therefore, planting season is not the best time to do that or when the children are getting out of school and wanting to utilize the park. So I've talked with Lisa Leatherman with Duke to make sure this wasn't gonna, we weren't going to lose the funding that we had secured. Also talked to Ben Lastert at LTLT. They all seem to be in agreeance that maybe this September would be the best time to do the planting and the repairing work there.
As for the rest, we're probably.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Okay. If you'll notice, other repairs, maintenance, other services, miscellaneous, and then your, have all went away. And they've actually been called, you'll see some new line items that I'll go over. Capital outlay equipment, nothing there, we're not purchasing anything new. Now, capital outlay vehicle, this is for one of the vehicles, the aging truck in the streets department. And again, we're looking at a lease option there. Your capital outlay improvements, that $50,000 is the same as last year. That's for some funding set aside for your crosswalks and your sidewalks. Gives you some funding there. Okay, contract services, this is a new line item. Again, this is your J and B bill for the trash cans on Main Street, the pickup there. Now, this Macon County, what that is, that is the dump fees that we, when we go and we have trash or we accumulate stuff, that is a rough estimate of what we're paying Macon County in dumping fees. So we call, called it what it is. Your lease payment, that was a new line item we added. What that is, that is a lease payment on one backhoe that you have in streets. And we were able to decrease the streets budget by $2,932. Any questions there? The next one, Powellville, basically, you know, again, it'll be interesting to see how it will play out this year. We're hoping for the best and we budgeted the same as we did this previous year. Any questions there? All right. The next sheet in, this is kind of a recap of general fund. In this, I also want to talk to you about the pay plan implementation. So the debt service, and like I said, Evelyn will touch on this when we finish up in more detail, but the debt service that you have in general fund is on your municipal buildings. That's this building, that's your police department building. Evelyn, is there anything else in that or is just those two, right?
That's, that's all.
Just those two and this one, all right. And as you can see, your principal and interest has decreased from last year. So total debt service is $155,575, which is a decrease of $7,425 from last year. Now contingency. Contingency, we have increased and I will tell you our reasoning behind that. Contingency is kind of your emergency relief fund and way to think about it. $30,000 is a little low, in my opinion. Therefore, we upped it to more of a realistic number of $100,000. That way, if something happened to where, forbid that town hall caught on fire or something happened, you have access, we can come to the board, go in contingency for an emergency basis. I think $30,000 is a little low mark for that. Evelyn, do you want to touch a little bit more on that, kind of where we come to that conclusion as well?
Well, part of that, I guess we could say, when you have miscellaneous strung throughout your departments, that's basically a contingency for that department.
We pull it from there.
So we don't have any, we don't have any miscellaneous within the department. The miscellaneous shows in contingency and you have to approve those expenditures.
So it has to be.
No direct expenditures can be made from contingency. You have to transfer it from there based on your approval and put it wherever you want.
Now, this debt service is only for town hall and police department.
Yes, that's.
It's not for the parks building.
That's almost right.
Your pay plan implementation. Your pay plan implementation, we've been working with the MAPS group for a few months now. They're still giving us some final figures, but for budgetary purposes, we need in the number to where if the town does decide to enact this pay plan, you have it budgeted. Though, what I've been looking at and what Chad and I have been able to look at so far, we split it to where we looked at each group and what we needed according to the pay plan preliminary results. It's split in three ways. You have your general, general fund, you've got your fire department and you've got your water and sewer. So what we did, what you need for general fund, we put under contingency so you would have to direct us to enact it. You would need $19,000 to enact that pay plan on that side of it. Something else, it's a little bit different, and I, let me back up. And I hope that is on, in a couple months, I'll be able to present something more concrete. I have been a little bit disappointed with the lack of communication from the group that we've used because it should have been three, three months when they're finished and now it's taken on a whole new beast of its own. But for budgetary purposes and something to, for our employees and for the board to know, this is what we're looking at for this upcoming year that we would need. Something that's a little bit different is this year, instead of having appropriation of fund balance, we're suggesting a contribution to fund balance. A contribution to help you grow your fund balance. And as we go through this process, Ms. Suther will show you kind of a, a chart where your fund balance has been and where it's at. So we're suggesting a total contribution to fund balance of $68,020. So total appropriations for this budget year would be, in general fund, would be $3,882,700. Any questions on that page?
Maybe it's just Saturday morning. Can you explain the pay plan implementation amount? Because I thought you had put all those increases into the salary back in the departments.
That's the cost of.
Okay.
That's the COLA, the 2%, that's what's co-mingled there.
So the other is the actual?
Is the actual.
2%. And this is the, getting them up to where they need to be?
Bingo.
Summer?
Yes, ma'am.
Is the, is the increase in benefits that we would have relative to those pay increases, is that included in this number?
Yes.
Pay more money, you pay more parking.
Oh, yeah. Other questions? Okay. All right. The next one we have is fire department. And I know Farrell, you've been involved, so if I misrepresent or if you want to add something, feel free. Okay, you're, and again, remember, this is subject to change based on if the county does approve what I read earlier in the memo.
And that's, is this based on?
This is based on?
Revenue neutral?
Yes. Yes.
Which was, which was the number that we had at that point in time of value.
Yes.
And it's our understanding that those fire district values changed after we did this.
Right. Okay. Fund balance budgeted for this year, $208,605. Your fire tax, $582,915. And then your miscellaneous is the $1,076, which gives you a total revenue of $792,596. Now, this.
Yes, ma'am.
This is a fire department fund. How much is it? Do you have?
Yes, ma'am.
At the end of 2014, last year, we had $446,400. We project at the end of this year, 2015, we'll have 300,000. And that's because, as we all know, we use primarily fund balance to make that big debt service.
And it's my understanding that was a conscious decision.
Yes.
We knew what we were doing. I mean, that was on the table. That was a decision that was made.
Your expenditures do include the additional person, so that's why you're going to see an increase in your salaries and wages. A couple things, this part-time salaries and Farrell, you may can talk a little bit better on this than I can, but what that is, was it, what is it one time? It needs to be called what it is. It was a stipend volunteer salary. And it's truthfully, if you're working a shift, that is a part-time employee, you're getting paid to do that. Therefore, it should be called a part-time salary. And what this is for is two to four individuals where you could rotate and have eight-hour coverage for shift on weekends and also allow for coverage if one of your full-time firefighters needed a sick day or vacation time. Your fireman fees went up a little bit this year from 50,000 to 55,000. And it is to my understanding that they're actually, I believe Warren and Farrell have addressed this, that motor vehicle has went down from $10 a call to $5 a call. And fire has went from, or fire has remained at $10 per call. Your dental is reflected here, that's something that you didn't have last year. Your uniforms have decreased, your supplies have decreased, your travel and training has decreased, your telephone bill decreased. Utilities went up slightly, that is your gas and then your power bill as well. The building maintenance, the reason that has increased, that is they're wanting to do a new kitchen in the fire department. So they have gotten some price quotes to what it would be to do a new remodel for their kitchen that they have. So that's the increase there. Equipment maintenance is decreased, your vehicle maintenance is decreased, again, though that's part of the fuel line item we put in here. This other services, and Evelyn touched on, yeah, Evelyn touched on this a moment ago. The other services, $177,000, we've, we've accounted for that in the lease purchase payment. Dues and subscriptions have decreased, miscellaneous went away, capital outlay equipment, and it, well, let me back up because I had some notes. Your equipment maintenance, what that entails, that is 15 hydro tests, six flow tests, and hose testing. That's what that will be for this year. Your capital outlay equipment is for four self-contained breathing apparatus at $5,300 each. Then your non-capitalized equipment is 600 feet of fire hose, pagers, portable radios, and thermal imaging cameras. Computer supplies, that's for a new computer. Now, the pay plan implementation, here's that second piece of that grand total, that pie. The 19,000 was for general fund, what you would need if the board wanted to do the pay plan in fire since it's its own fund. That's what would be needed to get the salaries in line. So that's your second piece of the pie. And then your non-capitalized equipment, we touched on that. And then this capital reserve, we're going to look at that. Capital reserve for future vehicles will allow a reserve fund to acquire future vehicles. So something to think about. Any other questions on the fire department that myself or Farrell, Farrell, do you want to touch?
Administration rate first, increase that from 5,000 to 7,500. And that's basically money we're taking out of the fire department money to pay back the town for the work that they do for us, where it's cutting checks or whatever they actually do on. So that helps out a little bit of that on that, since that money doesn't come out of Franklin. Any Franklin town tax, it all comes, even though the taxpayers pay it, but it's a county fire tax and it covers, as you saw, on the amount of property, it covers much bigger areas of the town. Franklin on its own is the amount of tax, taxes in the five-mile district that the town of Franklin actually had.
In, in the part-time salaries, we've got a couple of guys down there that gets, or gets like $200, $200 a month because they help with the equipment. So they help with this, they help with that. Where, where is it, 250? Is it in part-time salaries? Is it in salaries and wages?
Salary and wages.
So it's just salary and wages?
Yes, sir.
Part-time salaries are going to be, because we're going to actually hire, we've looked at it, actually to hire some people part-time, which may be other than Franklin Fire. They have to cover the weekends and such.
Because currently, it was just referred to as stipend volunteer.
Yeah. Does that include any effort paid anybody right now during the weekends, does that include their salaries too, right?
Yes.
So there's nothing, other than maybe an additional part-time or something like that, is there nothing else?
No, sir. Any other questions? There were five. Water and sewer, we did a little bit different with water and sewer and it's reflected in your notebooks. We actually sat down, instead of just having, we did co-mingle some of it, but we took the time and sat down with the water plant, the sewer plant, and the public works director and had them tell us what you need around your facility, instead of just saying, we need this, water, sewer, public works. But we tried to kind of list it a little bit further here. To kind of, who we're at, we'll just go over the revenues, you retained earnings, $275,718. Utility fees for this projected upcoming budget, $3,263,000. Taps and connections, $50,550. Reconnections, $15,000. Sell materials and supplies, $10,000. Availability fees, $10,000. Dumping fees, $30,000. Interest earnings, $500. The miscellaneous, $20,000. And then the Macon County, $32,000. Now, those figures do include that five, if the board enacts that 5% rate increase, those are reflected in those figures. Here, from the expenditure side, you'll notice, again, you have a longevity line item.
What's the Macon County 32?
That is the, what that is, that's kind of.
The leach aid, that comes off the county landfill. And we're doing tree for part-time and we're reimbursing them some for, for that land that, are we not? Is that part of it? We reimburse Macon County for, for paying our, a part of that new sewer line they paid in.
Not on this one, because that's, that's part of your, and I don't, I don't saw a bill for that. Have you ever? Yes, I know. That is part of the leach aid. It's also part Macon County where they do give to us a portion of a part-time salary, which is one of your operators of the sewer plant.
I think county pays for half.
Half.
Of that cost.
Okay.
That total cost of that person plus their benefits.
Because of the leach aid.
Yes. Anything else under revenues?
And what's missed, Evelyn?
That's a revenue.
That's a revenue, not an expense.
Yes.
We're trying, we're trying.
Professional services, what that was last year and this year, that is the funding that was paid for Martin and McGill to do our CIP plan. We left that the same in case we wanted to do some additional work with them. I know there's some questions, maybe like purchased water system rates. We put that funding in there in case we wanted to expand further with anything with water and sewer, we would have that funding available to contract with individuals. One line item that's new, this is your license dues and subscriptions. Didn't have that last year. It's $10,240. And what that is, that looks at any, that looks at your permits that are required by the state at the water plant, the sewer plant, public works, any license dues or subscriptions that the state requires us or that is included in that. Before, it was just, I think some of it was co-mingled in supplies. So now it said what it actually is being paid for. Your uniforms went up and this is due because there was not enough money budgeted last year. That was not a true picture of what it was actually costing you for uniforms. Your supplies, we were able to decrease that to $251,109. A new line item in there is lab supplies. And what this is, this is lab supplies that the water plant and sewer plant need to run their labs. Travel and training increased and I will tell you why. We have some individuals at public works, we have some individuals, we have one new individual at the water plant, he's been with us a year, but he's working to get his A and B license. So there'll be some training there. And then at the sewer plant, we have two, one new individual who, again, he's working to get his license. So we have that cost involved. And then you have two individuals who have expressed an interest to the superintendent down there that they would like to obtain some additional training, which I think is great because I think that public works, water and sewer as a whole, if they're willing to go get it, we should support them on this. Telephone, we're able to decrease to 5,000. Now, here's where your postage comes back in. You'll remember under facilities, where we decreased it to 5,000, we put postage, since the bulk of your postage is from water and sewer, we put it right back in here and you didn't have that last year. Other communications, that is the dish network that they have down there in their lobby. Utilities, that is your power bills, for instance, on all your pump stations. And a truer picture of what we're spending on that is closer to 200,000. Building maintenance, that went up and I will tell you why. Building maintenance at the sewer plant, for instance, they are in desperate need of a bathroom. The bathroom that they have is deteriorating and it needs to be remodeled and redone. There's also some gutters down there that need to be replaced. And then there's also a couple pump stations. Hemlock Hills, I couldn't think. Going to do reshingle it, paint it, but that's what, that's the increase for this year. I don't think that's it. The big thing was that bathroom expense. Oh, and some lighting, I forgot that. There's desperate need of lighting at the sewer plant and water plant for safety reasons because anytime those individuals have to work a night shift or at the sewer plant, if they get called in at night, there's no visible lighting for them to see how to operate that plant. So that is the bulk of that expense. Equipment maintenance, we're able to decrease. Vehicle maintenance and fuel, you'll notice we split that up. A truer picture of your vehicle maintenance is $22,610. And your fuel that costs you for your public works, water and sewers, about 22,000. Your water tank maintenance, that is a contract you're on with utility services. And I received that contract and this year, the contract is for 76,000 as opposed to 80,000. So that's the decrease there. Now, your contract service is $120,900. There's a ton of stuff in there. This is your, for instance, your Carolina Energy, the different groups that we use to monitor some things at the water plant, the sewer plant, your J and B disposal for them, your errant termite pest control, Fortaline, Chemtech, anything that we're on contract with, whether it be for a chemical or maintenance, we have put it under contracted services instead of other services. Insurance and bonds, oh, really, I'm sorry, I have a book about to come out. Insurance and bonds, a truer picture of what we're spending there is closer to 60,000, not 85. And then miscellaneous went away. And part of miscellaneous, for some reason, in miscellaneous, there were some things being paid out of that should have been paid out of travel and training dues and subscriptions. So whatever we saw was being paid out of that, we called it what it was. So no miscellaneous.
Can I ask questions on this page?
Sure, yes, ma'am.
You said contracted services was from other services, so actually contract services went up?
Yes.
Like it doubled?
Well, now, some of that in contract service also is part of your miscellaneous too.
Part of miscellaneous.
Yes, ma'am.
And then, on a side note, on postage, if we're able to eventually get a software that will allow people to pay online, will they be able to opt-in for electronic billing which will bring the postage?
Will it bring down significantly. And another thing to look at is something that we have been trying to look at and go a bit further, is if we did look at another system, accounting system and utility system, is you would have the ability, instead of doing a postmark card, you could do a letter or they may do the billing for you. So there may be some savings there to where more people could pay online as opposed to us still trying to send a bill to their bank and do a draft. There is some savings there that we can definitely look at, which I think would be worthwhile and behoove the town in general.
You can also do the electronic billing if you get the right company.
Yeah.
We could contract for that. There's no better upfront cost, but that beats sending a bill.
Exactly.
That's what most people were used to.
Except for all seniors.
Sure.
So it does.
Anything else on this page?
This is so saving.
We can do that, Miss dress.
I can't wait for the next.
Just for information, this page I'm calling for a break.
We can do it.
I think we've about warned everybody else.
Sorry.
No, it's not your fault. It's you I'm worried about.
Oh, yeah. I have to say another million or billion.
Don't, don't, don't get worried. We're going to have a break here in just a minute.
I'm amazed with what you're stored, really. I'm sure you learned, like you say, yeah, I mean, the stuff, where you know what pockets and everything and you can ream it, ream it.
Thank you. Last page before our break.
All right.
Macon County, this is the, on the expenditure end, if you'll remember, a few moments ago, we were talking about on the revenue end. Here's your expenditure end, so it'll balance out. Capital outlay vehicle, this is in the budget message and hopefully, again, if we can do a lease, a lease to purchase, that is for the two vehicles to replace the two 1988 vehicles with over 100,000 miles. Capital improvements, didn't have any this year or last year. Your capital outlay equipment, what that is, and that is broken up in several things. Your capital outlay equipment, that's the non-capitalized, the 500. A couple of these are to rebuild some pumps and aerators at the sewer plant and one of the lagoons at the water plant. I did talk to Jay, our public works director, and Rob at the water plant to see if that was something we could wait, considering we're getting ready to do the upgrade and expansion and the state says no, that that needs to be replaced as soon as possible. So that's why, of course, some of those figures are coming in at. Something else to note, this capital outlay distribution lines, we, last year, we had 145,000. We have done away with that line item and we're calling it what it is. If you'll remember, back in January at our board retreat, we looked at our CIP plan and our CIP plan was broken up in really the two sections, our water, our water upgrades and our sewer upgrades. So we took that and said, you know, we need a capital outlay sewer lines and a capital outlay water lines if we're going to stay true and enact this CIP plan. And the bulk of this is Forest Avenue. We're hoping to have Drouin Street finished before June of this year, have that one done on the table. The bulk of this one, though, is for Forest Avenue because Forest Avenue is on the CIP plan. In the CIP plan, though, Forest Avenue shows that it's about four years out, but as we all know, that road is in terrible condition. And if we can move that up and address it as opposed to waiting four years before we can pave it, I think it would behoove the town and it would help the citizens out in that area. in that area. Your principal and interest, and after we get back from break, Evelyn can, we'll talk on this a little bit further, but that's the, what's budgeted. Of course, the principal and interest has decreased from last year. Your lease, we pulled that out as well. That is for your second backhoe that's paid out of your water and sewer. Your non-capital equipment, and Miss Abel, you were correct, that is the air conditioning unit that we talked about for $570 at the water plant. They need a window unit in their storage tank, because that window unit is tore up, and it was going to be more to fix it than to buy them a new one. This is a little bit different. This reserve pump and lagoon, something that we thought about, is every five years, state law requires towns or municipalities that have a water system to pump their lagoons. We did that this year, but it was $150,000 that we fronted upfront. I don't think that's a good approach to long-term planning. So what we're suggesting is, you're not going to have to do it again to 20, I believe it's 2018, 2019, is if you will start a reserve fund for the next five years and put in 30,000, so when it hits again and comes time for us to do it, we're not biting off that whole chunk of 150,000. Administration reimbursement, we're able to decrease that from 100,000 to 70,000, 77,000. And then the last leg of this pay plan implementation, remember we said there's general fund, sewer, or, excuse me, fire fund, and then water and sewer. The final leg of the pay plan implementation is in your water and sewer, and to order to enact that and bring some of those salaries up, that's what it would cost you, the $15,312. Any questions there?
Not being here, let's take a break. What, about five, 10 minutes, are we there, buddy?
Let's walk around.
Okay.
Wishing the sunshine.
All right, Madam Manager, who do we turn it over to now?
Okay. What we'll go ahead and do, if y'all don't mind, is we'll turn it over to Ms. Southern. She's going to look at your fund balance history, and then talk about your debt service that the town has.
I've put a couple handouts in front of each one of you. The first one, the letter-sized paper, is the fund balance history of the town since 2009. And these numbers come directly out of your audit at the end of each year. Let's go through that first column first, and just kind of talk about those, the definitions of those categories there. Restricted, underneath that, you have two groups, which is stabilization of state statutes and power bill funds. State statute stabilization is nothing more than accounts receivable. Whatever you are due in revenues at the end of the year that you have not received, but it's due, you record it as accounts receivable, but you cannot appropriate that for expenditure, because you don't have it yet. The next category is power bill funds, we all know that's restricted. Prepaid items, you only see that one time, and that's simply what that is, it's something that was paid in one year that was not due until the next year. Assigned, assigned is the amount of fund balance that was appropriated for the next year. And then unassigned is the category that's available for appropriation. And as you know, fire fund is included in your general fund numbers. So I separated that out, it's not separated in your audit. And then TDA, we pulled that out in 2014, so that no longer shows. So if you look from 2009 over to 2014, which is numbers that we know what they are, because they were recorded in your audit at June 30. So if you look from one to the other, from 2009 to 14, you can see what your changes have been. Some of those are going up, some of them are going down. The one thing that, that we think is really important to notice, that's the unassigned general fund balance. That's the amount that is available for appropriation on an annual basis. If you look over to where we are now, at where we were at the end of 14, that's 435,000. In 15, we're projecting that to be bumped by 200,000. Now, and the way we determine that is projecting revenues, what we think our revenue, total revenue, is going to be at June 30, 15, and what we think our total expenditures are going to be. And the difference between that, whichever way it goes, is what your change to fund
What is the percentage the state says to the state? Eight percent?
Eight percent.
What does that amount to?
That amounts to, you're able to pay one month expenditures if you have eight percent. Something happens and you draw down no revenues in that month, that, that's where that comes from. Eight percent is one month.
What would our eight percent be, just on a normal basis?
If you took, I think our expenditures last year were 3.7, if you took eight percent of that, how's that, 250,000, thereabouts?
After our, over the years, our general fund has looked healthy, but this was funded that was designated, but the thing wasn't available. Our public doesn't, they didn't. Ten million dollars, why do you increase taxes, why don't we decrease taxes? Well, we really don't, we only have that unassigned general funds, only money we have to point with, because everything else is designated to sit.
That's exactly right. And that's why I point that out. I think that's the number that's important for you. Now, in that power bill line, if you look at 2014, that 588,000 was what we actually had in reserve, power bill funds in 2014. But in this year's budget, current year that we're in right now, there is that 450,000 that keeps rolling forward. You appropriated those dollars, but you didn't actually spend them. So I think Summer's got some processes to try to get some of those projects done before you're in, which, how many is fifty plus to it? So I reduced that 588 by what she expects to spend this year, plus the revenue that we've collected for this year. So we're, if those things should happen, we'll be at 570 by 2000, end of 2000.
And if I just cut it out in time, for this year, we're still in good shape at least for about this year.
Yeah, and next year, you can probably get some, you can get that 450,000, you can get that done. So the total fund balance at the bottom in 2014 was 1.8. We project that to be 1.6, and that's even though we're showing an increase in general fund, there's going to be a decrease in fire, most likely. And that's because we're making that debt service payment on that fire equipment from fund balance, basically. We're budgeting more in expenditures on an annual basis than on a revenue.
Prior to purchasing those trucks, we would, we would budget, out of our actual fire tax rate, came in through budgeting, about $100,000 a year, that continued and ended that budget, which, for all intentional purposes, it's almost like, like a normal commercial entities, without depreciation, you depreciate equipment, you budget that each year, then when it comes time to replace it, you've got the money. So we were building that money up each year, then we made it for that lease purchase, and that's a part of our debt service that's going to come out every year, and we've got a couple more years on that debt service.
Any questions, please? How much did we tell?
Actually, you take these two pages that I gave you and put them into email. That shows you how far out you're committed.
Oh, we're adding on. Some others won't be around.
Well, you know, I thought that when I was doing this, I thought, who cares what's going on in 2033?
Well, you got to look out in 20 years, we'll do plans.
Okay, that, the first entry there, which is SunTrust Bank, that was, I think originally the financing that was done for town hall, police station, and some water and sewer projects, including the public works, public works within water and sewer. Yes. That was done, I think, in 2010. We refinanced that in 2012 to get a better interest rate. So this one is broken down, 36% of the entire debt, the 4.2 that we refinanced in 2012, 36% of that was general fund facilities, 63% was water and sewer. So we, we only budget the debt service for general fund in general fund. We budget the debt service payments for water and sewer within our enterprise fund. So that's the reason for that split, and that'll be paid out 2023. Then we have a financing in 2010, which was with Bank of America, for 2.6, that, and all that water and sewer, that will go off in 2024. That's at an interest rate of 5.11. We might want to look at that. We might could do a little better on that. The next one is the one that we just finally closed on, which is the water and sewer treatment, wastewater treatment plant. That turned out to be 5,190,000. We had 5,300,000 available to us in that loan, but we did not draw it on to it. We didn't spend it, so we didn't draw it in. So it just makes our payments less. That's with Deener, North Carolina Deener, which is interest rate of 2.45 for 20 years. That one goes off in '33. So the next one is the financing that we have for the equipment at the fire department, that goes off in 2016. The bottom is totals by fund. I didn't total that in the grand total, because you pay for them separately, you have a different stream of revenue for each one of those, so I totaled them individually. So one other thing that is on the table that we all know about is the water treatment plant, which is not on, not on, but cost of doing business when you have water and sewer.
Water and sewer improvements, maybe you should have done some water and sewer.
Miss Abel, how much did you say was that refinancing we did with SunTrust?
4.4, 4,277,000. It's down about five loans, but that's up in 2012.
I thought it was in the script. They'll be paid off, and we'll be able to take from our budget and re-contribute it into the fund.
And the water plant, finance charge at the end of zero, hopefully by the time we get ready for that, they'll give us some grants.
I understand that, that the water plant, that was from their original purchase, that's the original water plant from 1977, and we're still paying on the loan?
That's right.
Well, yeah, there's refinancing, that's right, because we've added on traditional tanks and that chemical frequency system. There's been changes over the year, but it's actually, in fact, that was the original, part of the original loan that was built, that was built in 1977.
Is there another debt that I don't have on yet, what was your saying?
No, no. I was just saying that one of our loans goes back years and years, was whenever they built the water treatment plant, got rid of all the wells in the 70s. One of these loans is still on the books for that.
The one we just paid off?
Yeah, the one we just paid off.
For years.
The 12,000.
You don't know what I withdrew from this?
That's why, that's why I asked for this, essentially, I wanted to see exactly what we have, because we're getting ready to go into more debt with the new ones, so we've got to, we've got to make sure that our revenues coming in are going to be.
And here's, the question I have is, if somebody were to walk in now, and said, we will pay all of your debts off, what, what figure are we looking at?
Ten million.
Of what we owe? So we're somewhere owed in the neighborhood of 10 million dollars.
Not including the water plant.
Okay, 10 million before we start with the next project.
Any other questions? Was that helpful?
Oh, yeah.
The last two items I had, and then I'll kind of turn it over to you guys for questions, is, and you're distributing to you guys the assessed value, to kind of give you an idea of what your revenue neutral with a growth factor rate would be. It's kind of give you an average of what you're looking at with tax bills, what your average citizen would pay based on the assessed value, starting at 25,000, going up to a million dollars. And we've broken it down to show you what you look right, look like at your current rate at .2700, and then your revenue neutral rate with a growth rate of .2784. And then if you wanted to take it a step further, and wanted the difference of what it looks like to take it up to a penny of .2800, to kind of show you the price difference of what your citizens would expect to pay.
So that would be like a year worth of how much difference it would be, right?
For example, if your tax, if you're paying right now $67.50 tax, under one cent, you would pay $69.60. In a summer to figure it on two cents, you would wind up paying $71.25 from the two cents. No, it's not on there, I just asked, a while ago, we just, we were just, I just wanted to see the difference between what impact one cent as opposed to two cents.
What is it average, you know, the average?
Average, average for the town, the majority of your property, for your residents, 75 to 100,000 is your average tax bills for most of them.
So that would be an increase of $10 a year.
If you had, for instance, if you had assessed value of 50,000, your current rate, you're paying $135 a year, the revenue neutral with a growth factor would bump you up to $139.20. So that would increase your tax bill by $4.20. If you rounded it up to a complete penny, the .288, you would be paying an additional $5 from the 139.20 to the 140.
Now let's remember that a year ago, we went from $25 to $27. The main reason was to start repension of our general fund. And it also pretty much put us in line, based on this reevaluation coming, to be exactly where it was.
If we hadn't done that, we would have been.
If we hadn't done that, we would have been three, you know, three, three cents in nickel, I consider.
You know, from what I'm hearing out there in the public, nobody showed up on the two cents for pitchforks and torches to burn us down. I think everybody is pretty aware now of just where the town's standing is and what's happened to the town because of the legislature. I hate to keep it on the legislature. But folks, I'm not going to mince it. That's what the problem is. And they've got a, what, $400 million increase in revenues now? Well, where did that come from?
They found it.
They found it on our backs.
The senior citizens that no longer got a deduction from medical was one of the biggest problems.
Hidden increases in the tax.
That were taken. There's no such thing as an educational lottery in North Carolina. It's not an educational lottery. So, it wasn't even at the 40% that it was supposed to be, and that's down to what, 17?
It's a windfall of a television advertisement.
That's right.
Well, we're talking about that area. Where do we want to go on this?
My opinion, I'm all for rounding it off. We have in plans in our budget, it's actually, my budget's pretty comprehensive in my general fund. So, we're at a level now with the increase that we did last year to allow us to put a little bit more money, start building up our non-destinated general fund accounts. Around it all, we're talking about 16 or 17. Revenue neutral, we have to do the math for our revenue.
I'd recommend one say an increased also.
Because we already know that we're building in some increases in our water sewer. We've got to do that to improve our enterprise fund for the future improvements for our water system. Times the improvements that we're paying on for years for sewer.
And any surplus from that we put into the fund balance?
Yes. We can take the item, if we've got in there, within a year, we're going to replace that fund balance and get that fund balance up.
Well, the way things are going right now, I'd really like to see us what money we have in the power bill fund starts spending it.
Oh, yes.
While we've got it.
I agree.
And I certainly, of course, personally, I'd rather see the two cents. But I will certainly go if the board wants to go with the one, I think that's the way to go because.
The county's going to go up.
Their revenue neutral is going to be four or five cents just for the revenue neutral. And they're facing a lot more cutbacks from the General Assembly, education is what we're facing. But we don't know what the future is. You know, we use that power bill money because, you know, we don't have to necessarily spend it all at once. And it allows us to build up and get us up to the project levels, some of the projects that we have to do with.
Well, what I'm worried about is if they may come up with some kind of crazy idea to take power bill money back away from us if we say. I'm sorry, but really and truly.
Yeah, if you designate it, though, I mean, even though you don't spend it, if you've got designated for projects and stuff like that, that'd be hard pressed, I think, to get it.
They won't take it away from us, but I think what the mayor's alluding to is that we may not get it in the future by some.
I'm actually alluding to, they might figure out a way to take it away from us too. Whoever thought they'd try and take away water assistance in airports from you now?
Oh, yeah, I understand what you're saying. Later, they did enact that reduction in taxes. But the only reason they did that, because come July, the state would have had to have reduced gas taxes based on the formula basis figures. But if they've already taken action, then they don't have to do that. It comes, it puts it off about a year. But we can definitely look something either some later.
I guess what I'm hearing is the consensus is that we may just go with one cent increase.
I think that's pretty reasonable at this point. Like everybody's going to be double taxed, the county's going to be hitting the, you know, all the people that live in it.
And the fire taxes go up and then the water and sewer.
We're not going to run taxes, we're just going to add some fees here.
And we're actually only, because of the revenue neutral, we're only, instead of the 10, we're actually only increasing actually increasing the taxes to the taxpayers of 16% of the 10 is what it's actually doing. We're just rounding it off of that. But last year, we did, we did do that increase and put us in a better financial shape based on the budget figures we looked at, and we were succeeding.
Well, I think in hindsight, it's a blessing we did what.
Well, people are telling us to make a decision because some people will be tough, but I mean, if they do, we've got to leave. We've got to leave ourselves stable.
And we've got to remember, we have to provide services.
It looks like we get better sales tax revenues this year too, if that trend continues.
That is the problem. One of those counties is going to have to.
Yeah, we're going to have to give up some of ours to other counties in the west. They did that redistribution. And you might make it county would be right there in that part of that redistribution, but we're not.
You take, for example, we spend a lot of money for tribe people to come in here and they buy, and they pay sales taxes. The counties that are going to get the help may not be going after that sales tax dollars like we have, and we've spent it out of our revenues. It is not a fair thing, but anyhow, well, on that. All right, where do we go next?
So, what we'll do with that when we are next at our public hearing at our June meeting, Ms. Sutherland and I will reflect that one, so that you guys see that in that budget. The next thing I have is your, if you guys want to switch gears a little bit. And the last thing that I have is the current proposed water sewer rates chart that was in your notebook. If you guys want to look at that. Similar, it breaks down what it looks like on your average bill for both water residential inside, commercial outside, residential outside and commercial outside. It should be the very, probably the very last page.
Both water and sewer? Oh, there it is, both waters.
Yes, sir. And this is just kind of something to look at. For example, your current rate at 20, in 2015, for example, if you look at your water and your residential inside rate for three quarters of a meter, the charge is 15, not counting the volume charge, but the $15. What this 5% would do for the proposal would bring it up to, it'd be 75 cents more. So, it'd be $15.75. You know, what you can notice is where it says current year, and it goes on out to year five. These are the figures that Martin and McGill have given us based on funding the town's CIP plan, what we've looked at at our December, or excuse me, our January retreat, looking at future water and sewer projects. And really, it's not, it's just maintaining existing infrastructure. You know, just keeping up to date and maintaining what we have. It also takes into consideration what we're going to need, the revenue we're going to need to produce in order to pay for our water plant upgrade and expansion. So, keep this in mind, that this is what it would look like the next five years of what rates should do in order to maintain. And then the second sheet in this is to show you what the sewer rates would do on the second page. For example, again, this is just looking at your base charge for sewer residential inside. You can break it down to commercial inside, commercial outside, and residential outside. But for an example, the residential inside sewer rate currently, just your base charge, is $7. The proposal of the 5% would bring it up to $7.35 on the base charge. And then at the very bottom of that, they've given you some examples of what a monthly bill would look like. Residential inside of 4,000 gallons, kind of similar to what we just showed you with the tax bill. That shows you what a current bill would look like, and then the 5% moving forward with the next proposed fiscal year following, the next four. And one thing to note, why it is important to maybe to consider this and to keep this moving forward over the next couple of years, specifically this year, is your tax and connections have dropped significantly. I mean, the town is not where it was three, four years ago, where you were getting a couple hundred thousand dollars in tax. I believe this year, we got 5,000. That's something you're going to have to start making up revenue for that loss.
We're also going to have to start stopping giving away the revenue.
Yes, sir.
It may have been one availability fee, yes.
They pay for water that they may not use now, but they pay, they say, well, you know, in three years, we're going to need additional 20,000. So, they pay for that availability of having that water. And then because you get up to a certain amount, we can't sell all of our water that's inside the city to people that might be outside. Am I right on this? We can't give all that away, so they have to pay for having that water available to them in some future.
Okay, thank you.
Kind of like buying into the system a little bit that we already have.
And that also allows us to plan for the future for our water sewer usage and know when we need to. And we've also got to look at 2015, 2016, then 15. To see our plan close in the capital in 2016. And there are a large user of water. And medicine, I want to call it, because of all those water issues.
Other questions on water and sewer rates? Hope maybe that was helpful to kind of show you what that would do and need to move forward with that.
I think everybody saw the loans that we've got out in the future, what we're going to have to pay enough the next third year. If we don't look at a gradual increase in these fees, we're not going to need to go through with our expansions or pay for them once we've already started. And that $10 million, if we get ready, add about a $5 million loan on books, that's going to be paid for.
Of the plans that were laid available to us and the figures that were laid available, this 5% is by far the best plan. Doesn't stay that way. It reduces a little bit as it goes lower than that. But one of them was to start with a 10%, which is a little shock for most folks, especially outside rents. So, personally, I'd recommend that we go with this rate.
Sounds good to me.
Let's say the apartment complex that we have approved, if that is still, how much do they pay to attack these and social chemistry?
That's a good question. We have calculated that. If that is to move forward and no fees, anything is waived, the town would stand to gain 177,000 dollars off that.
That's what we heard.
That's all.
You're talking about this, right?
Yes.
Does that mean the outside town make that higher? Are they outside?
No, they're going to be inside, be any.
That was a good question.
While we are owing to water and sewer or something like that, something that I'm wondering about, about two, it seemed like two or three times a year, I sign a letter that goes out to every water and sewer user about the condition of our water.
That's a test and payment letter.
And I just roughly figured out that's costing us between 14, around 1400 or 1500 dollars to do, and nobody reads it at all. All right, what I'm wondering about is if we not, should not petition the General Assembly to change that where all we have to do is post it as a legal notes. How many of y'all have ever sat down and really read those things? Other than Farrell, I know.
I read the first paragraph.
Well, bless your heart.
I read it twice.
But I've been thinking about that, really, and truly, this type stuff that just blutters up. That was one thing, but that may seem minor.
That's one thing.
And then we could also post it on our.
Everybody would have the same complaint.
We can put it on Facebook, then everybody sees it. Because our IQ would drop significantly.
Get a lot of likes on that one.
Okay, I just, that was just something I wanted to just mention, that I think is a complete waste of money. All right, where we go now, folks?
We've always. It's a good baby. Report findings and everything. They call the claim for mail five days.
Mr. Mayor, that's all I have. I'd love to answer, attempt to answer any questions the board may have, and I hope that you guys found this helpful. No fluff. We try just to be straightforward and tell you so we can tell the citizens where we're at.
This is one of those meetings that you think, oh, well, because at least, I should just say, I am reading, kind of feeling more informed than just going, blah, 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 and blah.
This is, I said in the beginning, I mean, I'll say it again. This is just, I've been around here 11 years on the board early, and I've never seen a budget as well done as this one here.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Billy's been here pretty times.
Oh, Billy, I thought. I apologize.
What do you mean, brownie points there?
You just stay out of this.
That's a good, that's a good presentation.
And I want to say I'm always amazed at our board, how we just jump right in there and work it out.
It's been a privilege to go work with you guys this year, truly, and I.
Well, is there anything else that y'all want to talk about? And I wanted to thank the media. This is the Times story. I know y'all love covering, it's exciting.
Especially on a Saturday morning.
You just love, give up your Saturday morning. Thank y'all. Well, is anybody else standing?
And one thing that I'll say about the fire department, we are going far, I mean, because if you read the news media and you look at the paper, you've got 11 fire departments in the county. This fire tax has been enacted since the late 80s in Mayan County. Since its inception, the Franklin Fire Department has never asked for an increase and actually decreased. One of the years, we actually decreased here in the revenue neutral, the reappraisal. But they've never asked for an increase on it. We've just allowed for the amount. And of course, as the building, when the building industry was booming five, six years ago, you didn't need it because our taxing base continued to increase, and we got increased money. Now that, now that we've dropped back with this reevaluation, this is the first time that we've requested, and all over departments have requested. Some of them, like the two or three times, in Franklin, it's never gone to one. We decided to go ahead this year because we've been using that money to continually to upgrade the department's equipment as well as to cover. Now, we're almost on a 724, 724 rate today. And that is only increased, we're increasing the calls. We're looking at an average of 15% every year of the calls that we're getting. When I left and retired down there, we were 1,100. We're projecting this year 15,000.
Do you know what percentage around the district has the most?
A lot higher than that, although the other districts are much higher than the next.
Okay, well, most, yeah, most of them, some of them are up to 15 cents. Seven, 14, 15 cents, and we were always at that zero three. And then we're going, we're going up. But a lot of the actual calls are out in the district. But that's where the money's coming from too. So, in other words, we get money through the county, county tax. So in other words, we get, we get money through the county, county taxes, the fire taxes, not a city park taxes, it's a county park taxes. We get all that money coming in, so, so a lot of the funding actually comes from outside.
All right, anything else? Okay. You look like, yes, this is yours.
The only thing I've been looking at was when she was going through the, where we were at with this thing, is, is there a way we can get that five point one one percent down on that one loan for twenty ten?
I don't know if we can, but I think it's worth a try. And what we do is just put out, put out an RFP to major banks and just see what kind of response we get. We might deal with, who is that, SunTrust?
This is Bank of America in the central.
Yeah, we refinanced, what, about three years ago, we did a refinance and saved what, four thousand dollars.
Yeah, because the other two loans we have are like two point, two point five.
And they were, they were high before we refinanced them, so we did go through a refinance.
You know, get that one, Dave.
Yeah, it would be, they'd definitely be, we're robust to look at.
Hey, before we adjourn, does the media have a question, the fourth estate? Are you just yawning? Here too, my friend. I tell you, we did. Well, I will, I will entertain with great joy emotions.
Hey, emotion. That we adjourned.
Okay, thanks.